Hello and welcome to the East Lampeter Township Public Meeting. All participants are now informed that this meeting is being recorded. This meeting is also being offered virtually utilizing Zoom, which is a cloud-based platform for remote video and audio conferencing. The Zoom application is free to the public. The general public is therefore able to join the meeting by connection through the Internet or by calling in by phone. The public is also able to observe the meeting on the township's YouTube channel. Please continue to check the township website calendar for any updates related to these public meetings. Agendas for these public meetings will also be available on the township's website. Please be reminded that this meeting is being video and audio recorded and will be posted to the township's YouTube channel for viewing. The meeting will now proceed with the chairman calling the meeting to order and identifying all other members present in the meeting room and those joining the meeting via Zoom. The chairman will then confirm those members joining by Zoom can be heard.
Evening, I'm Darrell C. Salt, chairman of the Planning Commission. Welcome. Also present this evening is Jerry Huskin on the commission, Randy Patterson, Jason Dagan, four members from the Planning Commission, Colin C. Salt, Director of Planning, Dave Sinopoli, owning for residential, Annalicia Hare is owning for commercial properties. And is Sarah with us online?
She cannot make it tonight.
Four members present this evening. And here's we have some online. Is it just the one, the one, and can you hear us on the Zoom? They may be muted. Which is okay. Welcome. First order of business is pledge allegiance to the flag. Do you stand and join?
Pledge allegiance to the flag. States of America and to the Republic of Japan. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda is approval of the minutes of January 10. Changes or additions?
Share. Under new business. Every my motion in the third line, it says being withdrawn. Common. It's like it seemed, I keep it like the word and inserted there. Because the number two and number three were withdrawn from the letter, but the and refers to five, six, and seven, which were related to deferrals that were approved from a prior plan. So just add the word and there, I think we'll be okay.
Are there any other changes to the minutes from the January?
There approval.
Hearing none. We have a motion for Randy for approval. Do I have a second? Randy, second from Jerry. Those in favor say aye and quick your hand. Is this none at this time? This evening, night time is new business. First item is plan 2020, 2021, 458 Beechdale Road.
Good evening.
Come forward.
I will go for future days and just go up and lay my plan out without you.
This probably be on the, what's that Beechdale Road? It actually, the majority of the property.
Majority of the front of the properties in Upper Lake Cock Township.
Yes, sir.
I could, I'm Roger Pride.
Is there anybody here in the audience interested in this plan? Since we don't have an easel, if you want, you may sure come up and see it. If not, well.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm Roger. I surveying and I'm myself. Yeah, the sheet here would show the overall property. There is an existing dwelling, existing what they call the mansion house. It's a property that is available for rentals for families. There's a business, there's a stable on the property there that we're talking about. The subdivision would be at the southern end of the property. When it brought here, the property with access from Beechdale Road on a narrow strip like a flag lot. And there would be a drive on that part of the property. Rear in Lampeter Township. Area to the west of the building area is a wooded area that would remain wooded, be unchanged. And that was part of the flood plain in the preserve area adjacent to the Mill Creek. We have asked for a couple of waivers. One would be preliminary plan processing, which is a fairly common waiver. Spend a lot of time on it. The second would be a requested waiver of moving ratios for former management. Typically, you guys like that. Been supported by your engineer. We are requesting action by the board for the planning module to DEP for sewer. They're proposing onsite sewage. There are other items through the review there. Pretty straightforward that we can address without issue. Upper Lake Cock Township Planning Commission has already supported a couple of things. Approval of the plan, they have a couple of waivers on their end to look at. There's a clear sight triangle, the intersection that is in the process of being completed. Impact the neighbor. And they have also recommended to supervise the burl of sewage plant into East Lampeter Township. All the sewage is over here, so there would be no reason for them to be involved. And in fact, DEP prefers that action to defer that rather than do it. Township's when it's unnecessary. Thursday evening for supervisors for Upper Lake Cock will meet, will be discussing the same, same issues. And we fully expect to get approval at that meeting. We have a very clean letter from Upper Lake Cock for all.
Just as a note, the, well, as he's looking, the entrance to the site. Here, all of the development is west of Upper Lake Cock, East Lampeter Line.
That's correct. Other than the road. Other than the drive, everything, there, there are infiltration days along the drive. Upper Lake Cockers reviewed that part of it. And in fact, your engineer has, has suggested input on that area also. You've taken that. Or, and if you'd like to talk about any of the comments in Upper Lake Cock, I do have them available.
I've not seen anything. Technically, it reviewed it, I just did another final.
We had, we had also requested a waiver of preliminary plan was supported by the planning commission. And again, third day, fully expect these to be approved there. We've also asked for affirmative street improvements, our improvements that we proposed in here are 25 feet wide. So it's kind of a little out of order to do much in a way as improvements there. The Clear Sight Triangle is part of it. The solicitor for Upper Lake Cock Township has that signed agreement. It just needs to be approved and signed by the board supervisors. So we expect again that to be taken care of. And the rest are financing and sign the papers. The last item that we do not have in hand currently is approval from the Lancaster County Conservation District for the FBS permit. That is is getting more and more, it's not difficult to get, not very timely. They sit for a long time. So certainly we're hoping for your support tonight and conditioned on any outstanding permits. Financing, anything in David Miller's view.
We're all looking at the February 10 letter, the updated letter that review. And the first request for waiver was
Yes.
You still have to meet all the requirements of preliminary plans.
Absolutely.
I heard you're right, you don't have any issue with complying with the two comments under subdivision land development.
That would work fine. Yes.
Since you're doing the online, just evidence that a planning module is not needed. Believe you said.
Actually, a planning module is required, but we are in the process doing that. Your action would be required next, followed by the supervisors and then to DEP for approval.
The financial security will be by the supervisors.
Yes.
And you.
And there are separate financial. We're only posting bonds for the improvements in East Lampeter as a separate.
And you have cleaned up all those ending issues for the with the township and then stormwater, you don't have any issue with those three items?
No, I do for your application, there is a minor misunderstanding or disagreement in the first comment, but I'm sure we can get it worked out. I don't ever have an issue, I think it's just a minor interpretation possible.
And the stormwater, first comment.
Scott Aan had made a comment, I talked to the engineer that we were working with on, on his side. And he said, I don't agree, we're going to work it out. So that's kind of the answer, yes, we'll get it.
February 20th letter appeared to be a volume of storage. Everything you needed more storage than you were showing, so.
Yes.
The others, and she has been worked down on that, I believe. So I have a letter from this comment.
We addressed those and that was sent in so long. Copy of that law. They're part of most.
Yeah, I think a couple are similar to the one should David Miller.
Yes.
They had, the first one was about the clean and green. The existing lot is enrolled in.
Yes. There is, there is that note and there will be a new clean and green application for the ten acre lot. And there's also when our management plans will slot into it really. And conservation, say I can as much as for each lot. They stopped the triangle, Clear Sight Triangle.
Historic resource of given house. The homes were misnumbered.
Yes.
So there are six, but they put three, six, four, five, so, okay.
Yeah. And I, and I did respond to that, we're going to apologize for not bringing a copy of that responsible.
But you don't have any issue in complying?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
We have an audience this evening, thank you. Anybody here interested in have any comments on this plan? Hearing none. Brother discussing. I'll look for a motion.
I'll take a vote. 2022 to 21 before to recommend to the board of supervisors for said the plan be approved in accordance with the conditions established by David Miller's. And it's funny, it's funny. Like just the kind of planning department, whether this team. 2022. Related to waivers and modifications, granted, the understanding that the applicant will be.
Motion, go ahead, second. And second. None. Raise your right hand. The unanimous. Agenda. East Lampeter Township official map. And the item after that is the East Lampeter Township Housing Study. Is that what these folks are here for? Or are you here for briefing items under the Rockville Master Plan? And the lower road lot hat on. So it looks like Rockville. In order to not hold you folks up, I'm going to jump ahead on the agenda. So that'll take a little time. Our end, if you're not interested, we'll move forward, but we can move on to that.
I am not, Chris Van Arck, this will be doing the briefing. Good evening, yeah, my name is Chris Van Arck, this is here this evening, really just as noted, reading on the work we've been doing on the rock. So I'm not worried how far with what we've been doing, how we've been working with staff, but the goal this evening is just a very brief introduction. We're seeking your feedback on where we're at in the process. I'll give some, I'll give you some background, history, a little bit of insight. And then what we're looking to do with our proposed master plan and then next steps. So the applicant for the property is Burnmore Homes. The master plan was formally submitted in December of 2022. And the purpose behind it was to redevelop and revitalize the property via the underutilized shopping center ordinance. We've had several staff, I mean, staff. We've had a review from municipal engineer as well on the master plan. And we presented the plan to the board supervisors. With all that feedback, basically, we've called the plan that you see before you and up on the screen this evening. So we're very excited about the project. Obviously, if you are familiar with Rockville, you know, it's an old property, it's tired, it's in dire need of a refresh. And that's really what we're here to achieve. We want to again invigorate the property and the way we're looking to do that on the approximately 65 acre site is to utilize the commercial development of Upper Lake District. C3 zone, again about 65 acres, the existing retail out there, 548,000 square feet. So that's a big number and you have to end up with a street. I think we all know what has recently happened with e-commerce and the site with its age, the ability to show visibility from Route 30, the major corridor is challenging. So we're trying to address that. Obviously, the main objective is to introduce housing as shown in the rendered portion of the site. And then also look across the entire property, look for opportunities to again reinvigorate the property in the commercial area. There's a high percentage of impervious cover. Is there a mic near this?
To mute.
To mute. I don't know for a moment, you guys, if it's possible to mute your mic. We're getting it. Perfect, yeah, we'll give that a shot.
Can you hear Zoom? We just had you mute, but now. Thank you.
So that's a bit of a brief background of itself and it's history where we got to today. Our idea for proposed plan that you see before you is a concept and site layout. At one point in time, we were showing, we came to the township, we approached the township to again introduce residential. We all know you need the residential, you need those rooftops to support commercial. So if we have a plan to revitalize the commercial portion, it's very important to bring in that residential component. We started off with about 300 units and being a redevelopment, and we know that if there's a demand for housing in the area, we don't want to take it away from existing farmland. So the request was made, can we get more units on the property? We didn't want to sacrifice what we described as like an elegant layout of the property. We wanted to be aesthetically pleasing, functional, have lots of open space. This was a plan across the whole property that we went, didn't want to jeopardize just to put units on it. So we came back to the table, caring township staff had requested of us and went and added an additional story. So that got us around 400 units on the property. And then through just some moving around with the design, we end up with what you have up there, which is right around 500 units of residential. The ordinance obviously has criteria, criteria for maximum density. We do not exceed that with this plan. Again, we're showing at this point, the white buildings on the plan that you see are 15 buildings, each four stories, each having 32 units in them each. There's also across the property, I'll point out on the board, we're seeing the residential in through this area, the clubhouse. All kind of centered on this main axis of pedestrian movement and this grand central core here, open space. We're also looking at the redevelopment of this parcel here with a restaurant. We're looking at what's identified as building eight. If you're familiar with that, Long Route 30 is rather a long building, looking at splitting that building, leaving some open area in there. And the like can serve as a plaza, have an opportunity for outdoor dining. If you have restaurants on what will become end caps and have that link come down into this core area where we're showing top lot. That can serve both the commercial users and the residential. And then as you work your way across the site, there's kind of just this large area of pavement, parking. And we thought it was a good opportunity, right over top of the existing impervious, to introduce another new building that would have retail on the first floor, residential on the second. And that was some feedback we got from township staff too, to try to utilize some of those open areas, bring in that, that element where you have a residential above to provide a variety of housing. The retail could be something like daycare, urgent care. And obviously that programming has not been determined at this point in time, but it allows for that with the master plan. As you work your way over on the western side of the site, again, an area where we felt that there was an abundance of pavement and parking, looking at introducing a building there that could possibly be either a restaurant or a grocery store, again, from a programming standpoint. So when you look at what we proposed here, you're starting out with 548,000 square feet. What we're now proposing to do is remove about 268,000 square feet. The current owner of the property is also working very hard with existing tenants to redistribute those tenants. So the objective is in the end here is that we would have full occupancy of the commercial area and then all the residential introduced. Because that's really where this ordinance was developed, was to address very much a lack of occupancy out there. I'm sure if you're familiar with it, you've driven by it, it's in desperate need of some work to get that occupancy back up. The streetscape plan was something I wanted to touch on as well, it was very important. So what we represented on the master plan is potentially referring to the streetscape plan, wanting that up on your wall there. So we're introducing both pedestrian ways, multimodal paths. As we work with the township, I mean, it's important to note that we show the paths come around the perimeter here. Around the property across Rockville Road. Then we added this new spine up in a north-south direction that bicyclists or pedestrians could utilize to get up to the main or along Route 30. And then also we thought it could range up in the area where we're showing that outdoor dining area. We also have a pedestrian link across the front and then, I'll be difficult to see, you might be able to see it better on the plan there, along the Hartland Bridge Road, the northern edge of it. We looked at possibility, the called the southeast corner down here, but you have some great limitations. So in talking back and forth with staff, we kind of came up with that alternate plan to allow that circulation across the site and get people to and from the streetscape plan. I mentioned that the central green in the middle of the residential area, the clubhouse that would be part of it, we're also looking at, as we mentioned, the tot lot, a dog park, some other outdoor amenities such as a swimming pool, horseshoes, cornhole, those kinds of things to support the residential community.
Chris, if I could real quick, the 32 unit, so are they like a four bedroom, like how many, how many bedrooms are in each? Like, are they single? So I'm not really familiar with the whole setup yet, so. Like, so are they two bedroom or three bedroom? Like, what are they? Are they just like a standard apartment or?
I believe, I don't know if the firm more could respond to that. I believe the goal was to have a mix of one, two, and three.
Yes, they are one, two, and three bedrooms. It's a mixture. I'll mute myself again.
Another element of the master plan I wanted to communicate to you this evening was, you know, we recognize existing residential on the south side of Rockville Road. So this plan, what we're showing, we tried to pick there is probably doing some burming along that road, like introducing evergreen vegetation, a mix of shrubs and trees to help buffer that from the folks to the south. Now, today, there's already existing commercial there, so you can believe that obviously it'll be an improvement to come in there and pull those buildings that were closer to the street away and then have the buffering as well. Very quickly, as far as particular access, nice thing about this property being a redevelopment is we're trying to utilize as much existing infrastructure as possible. So South Willowdale Road, road will stay completely intact. You can see access points onto South Willowdale, nothing along the southern end except what exists here. There's an existing maintenance building as well that we would retain. And again, existing points of access along what's out there today that be maintained as well. So in the end, it's an introduction of a mix of multifamily residential and the redevelopment of the commercial areas to reinvigorate the property. To an attractive place where people essentially can live, work, and play on the property. And we want it to be, you know, model example in the township and the greater community. As far as stormwater management utilities, being that this is a master plan state, we're simply seeking your input tonight on the plan. And where we would see ourselves going from here is we've resubmitted the master plan. We've addressed the comments that came out of the staff review as well as the township engineer review. And the hope would be to come back to the planning commission seeking action, to then move forward to the board supervisors, ultimately get approval of the master plan. So we can then proceed into the land development stage. So if it would be moving forward, obviously see it multiple times as we.
You know what the percentage, you'll be like with the one bedroom or two bedroom, the three bedroom, like is this going to be a max, like all one bedroom? Or do you guys have any plans on like percent wise of what you're going to put in there yet?
I don't know, it's the mix.
I mean, from what I understand, all buildings will be uniform, so they'll have the same amount of one, two, and three. Sure. Will that break down to me?
500 units now, what's the density of that per acre?
So the property is 65 acres. When you look across the entire property at 504 units, that density would be about 7.8 dwellings per acre.
What is it on the acreage of the, what you have, right, that identified as residential? Do you know that?
The area that's identified as residential is about 24 acres, so I think that would kind of be somewhere around. The area that's identified as residential is about twenty-four acres, so I think that would kind of be somewhere around twenty-two, twenty-three units per acre.
Is your target audience for these residents?
They will, I understand the market rate, so I can see empty nesters to maybe young professionals, possibly developing families, but I would see more empty nesters or the young professionals.
I'm sure you've looked at the market demand with Greenfield putting up six hundred plus units. And this, you know, is the market demand out there to satisfy all this housing.
It's a great question. It's definitely a concern. That's why we started out with three hundred. But we also recognize the importance of preserving farmland and if there's a demand for housing in Lancaster County, which I think we all know there is, how to quantify that exactly is difficult. But I think the conversations we've had with staff is, let's plan for, you know, this many units. And then let time dictate that, let the market dictate that. So, you know, I think some misconceptions that people have is that this will kind of just drop from the sky. When in reality, you may end up just putting in the clubhouse a few buildings out front, maybe you work your way south. That hasn't yet been determined. But in a sense, it'll basically develop over time as the demand is there.
As with any master plan of this size, or probably, I think we just said in other words, it'll be phased. You'll do a phase one, phase two, phase however many, till you get to it. So you'll start with the essentials and some buildings. Do you have any thought of what phase one might be? And an anticipated time to build out? Is it two years, five years, ten years?
Firmor might be able to address that again from their pro forma. From our end, I think we haven't identified phasing yet. With the master plan, it is kind of more of the concept. And we haven't gotten into the engineering yet. Sometimes the engineering will drive that, depending on existing infrastructure. But it's something we'll certainly look at. And again, I think it's going to be dictated by firm more and the demand they see upfront, how many units could be absorbed at a certain period of time.
Following your comments on density and need for farmland and which is prime farming in Lancaster County and within our township, have some or with other towns, some of the best farms. The maximum density you're allowed, twelve units. And you're not there yet. Is there any has consideration that often given to potentially, instead of a three-story, a four-story, a five-story, a six-story building to maybe accommodate a higher density if the demand is there?
We've had this discussion. The fifth and sixth story did come up. And essentially it's a, it's market driven. I'm not an expert in that arena, but the conversations that have been had are that, once you get to that fifth and sixth story, you have to go to the elevator buildings. And construction makes it very cost prohibitive. And essentially, if you're in a market, say like Philadelphia, DC, Baltimore, the rent rates can support those construction costs, whereas the rent rates here cannot. So there is a, there's a balance there, a market that drives what we can and cannot do here. So again, the original proposal was three-story. After working with the township, recognizing that, you know, we want this project to be successful for everybody, we went to that fourth story. Up the units again from three hundred to five hundred. And I think, I can't speak for firm more, but I think we're probably at the point where we feel to the point about how many units are online coming in Lancaster County that, you know, I think, want to be careful with that, but yet I believe the plan could offer the opportunity to be revised, because your ordinance does state that, I think it's every three years. If things are changing, the master plan should be updated. So again, if we all find out three years from now that, boy, there's just such a strong demand in Lancaster County, we could evaluate, well, maybe we can do some of the buildings at five, six stories. If, again, rent rate supported, if there's that much of a demand, who knows where the construction pricing will be. But we believe that this plan certainly can accommodate that. What we have to probably look at is also parking. That was a challenge was when we first looked at adding more units from two hundred to five hundred, that suddenly becomes a lot more parking. And again, I don't know that this would support garage parking at the rate there.
That was my next question. Assume it's all surface parking now. For five hundred units, and if you would go to a higher density with this area that's identified for residential, be adequate to accommodate a higher density and the additional parking needs that obviously would have to be provided to accommodate for a fifth or sixth story additional units. You know, I didn't, if you've looked at anything at that level to see if that's even feasible on a site to meet the parking.
This is Jeff, firm more, we're not anticipating any, and we're not going about four stories. I want to be clear. At this time, I just want to put it out there. I don't want to go down that route. We're not, we're not looking at doing anything more than four stories. That's, I think we're going down a route, which I don't know where we're going here. Yeah, I don't see that happening. Construction costs.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll mute myself again.
So on the agenda of the housing market study, or is like Peter Tashin, perhaps that will also provide you with information that might convince you otherwise. Just both rental rates as well as density and the ability to cover that construction cost. I know that's an issue from Lancaster City. Going well, where you can't do stick build anymore and you've got to go to steel structure. It's always been an issue for cost, construction cost, but we don't have many areas where you can have this density built. So I think it's really important for the township to take advantage of that when they can.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, and I think it was a great point made, something I can talk about too, is we are wanting to obviously utilize this property to the highest, best use without going too far. We didn't want to sacrifice or jeopardize the feel of the property, the way it feels to go, to move through the spaces and so forth. And again, when you look at what is just the residential component in excess of twenty-two units per acre, it's pretty aggressive for Lancaster County.
This is moved down elementary, would that be moved down elementary then, or which elementary would be in this area, that housing?
It's moved down. Yeah, you have a cost issue. Ever land issue. There's only so much period, the opportunity, as we see that it's there to potentially go up without going out and getting higher density and more housing that can meet the housing needs. And to mention, yes, we have a housing study that we're going to talk about later that we're moving forward on. And the county, countywide, that's occurring as well, so.
Okay, you addressed the location of the tot lot. Is that primarily for the residential or primarily for the commercial? Because I'm good to just tell you where it's located now, to me, since it's more of a commercial property than this residential property.
Actually, as we were going through the process, we had several locations for it. Pretty much all of this, this area. Now, in working with the township, I think the desire was to put it in a location where it increased its visibility and didn't make commercial residents, I should say, residents, commercial patrons feel they can't use it. So we ended up putting in this area to get a lot of that visibility, kind of put it up there near the commercial, but it is for use by the residents as well. So, and I don't know that we're, you know, committed to that location, but that was kind of the objective, the goals behind this location.
To me, it kind of goes with comment about bedroom sizes. If you are looking at two or three bedroom apartments, you are going to have some families living here. And I would just tell you, if I lived in the southeast corner here, I don't know that I would want my child to walk all the way over to that corner where the commercial traffic is to use the tot lot. So that's why he has two to four. If it's for residential properties, it should be in the midst of the residential properties. And, I mean, today, parents don't let their kids go off on their own. So if it was in the middle, parents might be willing to let their kids just run over to the tot lot. I doubt that they would if it on the corner of that street.
You said that's also where the opponents of clubhouse is.
It's situated at the end of the green.
Oh, at the end of the green, okay.
Now, again, that is out, is situated here.
I believe you've said it, but as far as the ingress and egress, the with the existing highways, are they going to stay or are they just being altered?
All the perimeter would stay as is, again, including South Willowdale that comes through the site right now. Here, it's staying intact.
Believe this, South Willowdale, that's one way in, one way out, right? You can only do a right out.
That's a two-way street.
That's a two-way, but as far as when you go onto Route thirty?
That's a full movement intersection, you have to dedicate, turn lanes each direction.
Oh, it's the next one up, okay. That's the other next road up. Okay.
Talk a little bit, you mentioned screening for the residential. I'm thinking more not in terms of what they can see, but like light that will be used for the residential, will that exceed what's being used today for the commercial? Will it be very similar? Will be there more light pollution over to that those residential block?
Well, when we get into some of the general land development, and you have your criteria, criteria for the IES standards, so we would meet those where we're not having the bleed over beyond the property lines. And then, of course, with dark skies influencing all those requirements, everything is downward focused.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Normally staff does a briefing item upon a potential new, so I hope you folks are this evening, thank you. Generally, on a briefing item, we don't take action, we have a discussion to move forward. If you're aware, a master plan is required for this overland district, which we've done. I wasn't expecting a discussion this evening, but thank you. So obviously, we had some knowledge, some questions. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Any from firm more homes? Or mine? Believe not.
I think it was just unmuted. I don't, I don't think we have anything else. We have a plan in front of you. And we appreciate your time and considering it. And as Chris said, this is our first first master plan. And as things evolve, I think he was clear that as the market evolves and then our potential evolves, we can adjust it going forward in the years to come. But we very much would like to get started here because we are losing tenants and it's continuing and we need to, we need to put property. So appreciate it.
Any other? Thank you. Just look forward to see. You're back with base. And continue working with staff. Through this. Looks, yeah.
Thank you.
Please. The other briefing item, anybody here reference to that? There. But we'll jump back to new business and and be the kind of official map.
Yes. Yes, so what we do is we revise twenty twenty-two, twenty-three township official map. They were last revised back in twenty fifteen. Not a good time to update it and add a few things to it. In your package, I gave you an official map sheet that kind of describes the purpose of an official map and benefit to the township. It's basically a map that sets forth the goals and visions of the township and also the visions that are set forth in the comprehensive plan. It shows locations of future parks, future public lands, facilities, transportation, recreational areas, open space, stormwater projects, in our case. Basically expresses the township's interest in acquiring these lands or what we would like to see in the future with these lands. Now, it does not mean that the way it's depicted on this map is how we want to see it, but we want to see something of the like on that, on that parcel, so. I also gave you all a memo that kind of outlines the additions we made to it. Most notably, we added the Chesapeake Bay Pollution Reduction Plan projects, which are stormwater projects mandated by our MS four permit. So we put quite a few of those on there. We updated existing and proposed trails, for example, the Walnut Street Extension, the Go Path. We added a path along the Conestoga River, Lincoln Highway, part of the streetscape plan, and also Mill Creek and Eastbrook. We also added a few road improvements, basically road extensions or making road connections that we thought were appropriate. We had a couple of flood control projects and having problems, specifically in South Rockson, Mill Cross. Other things we added were like waterline extensions in the urban and village growth areas. Added a few mobility hubs for the active transportation plan. Ped and pedestrian, and sorry, bike and pedestrian improvements along Old Philly, Lincoln Highway East. We also added the Bridgeport area transportation, pedestrian bike and transit enhancements. And also the trailheads for the Lancer Heritage Pathway. So those are the main, pretty much all of the items that we added to the the new revised official map.
I mean, with your third one, Colin. Millport Road. Expansion of road improvements, Millport to Lincoln Highway. I can, Millport, isn't that? I don't know how Millport gets to Lincoln Highway. Is that the wrong road or am I missing something?
I'm linking Strasburg Pike to Millport Road and to have an extra lane in there so that there's a right turn onto Millport Road.
From Strasburg.
On Strasburg. You know, we and then you're narrowed down to one lane until you get to Millport Road. So the idea is to have two lanes there and a right turn onto Millport Road.
So the road improvements will really be Strasburgs. Between Millport and Lincoln Highway. Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how that, yeah. Just in general for this side of the, well, for everybody. But more for the newer members to the planning commission. What we dealt with mostly is reacts. A plan comes in, subdivision land development plan that comes into the township, we react to it. This now, we're looking into this and the next item is collect. And how we develop the official map, that's a tool that we can decide the growth and direction of the township and let potential developers.
Defensive plan provides your growth and development with your zoning permits. Your official map takes into account your plans that get adopted so that you can look at your official map planning documents like land development, subdivision commitment, so that you ensure that the improvements necessary in public can be part of an implementation tool.
Yeah, we have an area. Yeah, we have an area. Same thing, but there's. An area shown on the official map for future potential development. That knowledge would be good for a developer to know whether to go into that area or not. If there's a trail across the lands that they were developed, the intent is that a trail would be included as part of the development. If they're looking to. A few years ago, we looked at parks throughout the township. And the extreme north. Western part of the township had none. And some areas have been designated that the green hatched area has potential for parks in that part of the township. And some of that depends on. The viability in that to develop, but also whether it's a viable park area. Uh, and that would give any potential development. And decide as to where the township has interest and help guide them from. Working with us to move forward, but yes, the ordinances, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision land development ordinance are the. Documents that have to be complied with official maps kind of a. Tangent off of those to give some direction guides. Within the township. Thank you, Sarah. This is forward thinking. Another tool in our toolbox. There was, oh, there is, there was a draft. Or. Original official man board is of. Fifteen. Has that been? That's pending or was it up or put out for review?
It's basically just a resolution adopting the new new ordinance. Yeah, so that you do have that. That's. That's been updated. Yeah.
So that has been acted on by the.
It's not been acted on. It's been updated. It will go after if you do recommend approval tonight of this. It will go to the board on March sixth for approval and adoption.
Okay, you answered my next question then of what is the board from? The planning commission to see.
Yes, yeah, we are looking for a recommendation. For approval.
So there is a draft ordinance out there. Or action by the supervisors. Uh, in order to move that forward, it. Be necessary for us to take some action on this this evening. Uh, we're going to. Or acceptance or additions or changes that we might see. Uh, with official maps. The item and. And this will be an attachment to that ordinance. As a. Part of.
Right.
Or in parcel of that written ordinance. So it becomes official, an official official map. If you will.
Questions, there an expectation that Smoot Town will remain school?
Schools. Do I? What?
I don't.
He did, he couldn't buy it. Any other thoughts? What's in front of us? That's. To where we go. I mean. Just additions. Revisions, solutions. Yours all.
I think the fact that most of the potential trails are. Uh, included now, the Bridgeport was an important one for me that that stuff has been included. Um, so even if a neighboring township would look at our official map that they would see what we intend to do and. In those areas, I I don't have any other changes that I would make to it.
Just for your your knowledge. Per the MPC, the Municipalities Planning Code, Colin did send this out to all of the adjoining municipalities, all of our planning partners and the school district. As well as Lancaster County Planning Commission, which is a requirement, so. Um, he's received little to no comment back for this.
What about school district? Nothing from the school district?
This. Item. Significantly impacts the school district.
No, but doesn't everything impact everything? Like when you want everybody's input, I guess I I guess I feel like I'd like that everybody's input, you know? So it's just a question that this school had, you know, they put input in.
It's it's.
Right. Yeah, I'm just curious if they answered it.
Yeah, the county did review it. They um, they say it's consistent with the place's twenty forty. Uh, the LIMC going together plan of twenty two thousand seven, uh, the valley strategic plan of two thousand three.
And parts of recreation.
Correct, and just CD parts of recreation.
Okay, I'm making a wish that we present the map as presented this evening to the board of supervisors for adoption.
We have a motion. I have a second. Jerry, all is in favor, say aye. And thank you. All in favor. Someone on the agenda, new businesses, eastland. Houses, but.
So, um. Again, I did find the men though, kind of the purpose of housing study. It means a broker, pre-located, one of the baby pop plan process, um, that we're looking to into, um. Obviously household size, housing makeup, choice, um. Make this difficult for a study to kind of figure out what's out there so we can properly plan in our top plan and then again in our zoning ones. So the township board of supervisors, uh, wanted me to pass this past the planning commission for any comments. Um, and or suggestions.
The one question I have, a couple, but the one question I have is related to terminology. You use the term tenure at several places as opposed to housing type. You meant you mean length of ownership, like the residency, or do you mean housing type?
In some cases, we mean the, and in some cases, it is strictly tenure versus type.
I probably for the consultants, uh, use stipulate those two. Uh, to mention both type and tenure. Intend to do that so they have a better understanding that they're what they're looking for.
Yeah, no.
That is the first paragraph. I'm curious about.
Offices. What the intention was to identify. Bedlining, are you looking for things of that nature in in housing in the township or? What specifically?
I'm sorry.
So very first paragraph, second page at the top. It says, in addition, the lending practices and interest rates as economic factors must be considered in the analysis. I just ask you what's intended by lending practices?
If anyone has. Issues about lending. In our housing stock.
Preventing people. Again, I would probably be a little bit more specific of what you mean by lending practices. Um, some consultants might just think, are you looking at the types of mortgages people are providing or? As opposed to looking at particular issues that might be preventing someone. Uh, from either purchasing or renting.
Well, and it's not it's not just purchasing or renting, right? It's also reverse mortgage.
Maybe it's an IE kind of thing that just a, uh, for clarity. Uh, on task two, you talked about housing profiles or condition. I'm just curious, what standard are you planning on using? For that.
We're going to actually leave that up to the consultant to to provide a standard that's worthwhile in Lancaster County.
So I suggest recommending the existing building code. Maybe it's. Sorry, there is a, there is an I. Uh, international building code for that governs property maintenance. And the city uses it, I think, man, I believe.
We use the IPMC as well.
And maybe just with maybe put that as. An example, but if they have something different that they have to specify. Specifically what they're going to use for their. That purpose, yeah.
Yeah, this this is in here because the prior zoning ordinance allowed conversions of single family to multifamily of in in some nature. And and there wasn't always as necessary to have permits in order to do that until two thousand three, one and four, when the. City came through, uh, so. We don't know how many are out there. And we don't know what condition they're in.
No, even in the city where required licensing, we still didn't know. Because people just went ahead and made conversions. Um, under, uh. As I didn't see anything about. Bedroom size. We're asking with Rockville about bedroom size. It talks about single family and two or multifamily. Uh, but it doesn't specifically talk about bedroom sizes. Which to me is is another issue, especially when we're talking about affordability. It's the developer can easily develop one bedroom units and efficiency units. They struggle to develop two and three bedroom units for the rent structures in Lancaster County. Um, so I would just, I would add. Uh, as a profile that they change bedroom size, uh, distribution within the township.
So size or number?
Um, well, number within a unit. Yes. Down to task five, policy implementation. Uh, there's the use of the word tenure a couple of places under task two, task three that I my previous comments still holds true. So you have identified policies to increase housing varieties at many income levels to address the gaps forecasted. But maybe this is just semantics, the difference between needs and gaps.
Yeah, so we don't know where those gaps are. We don't know what the needs are either at this point, so.
I'm just suggesting you use the word needs and gaps as the. And then deliverables, that policy framework to me focuses only on affordability. Only want to focus on, uh, again, going back to the needs and gaps. I think you want your policy to address whatever needs pop up. Affordability is going to be one. I guarantee you, but it may not be the only need that's going to pop up in a housing analysis. So I just make sure you get a policy framework from the deliverable that addresses. The needs and gaps, no matter what they are related to. I like to focus on affordability would eliminate that, but. I'd also comment on other needs, policies relate to other needs. Um. Last page under task six, the stakeholder involvement. Uh, you say these stakeholders may include, I urge you to use the word should or shall. Or must. Because I think all of those groups that you list there would have input into a housing analysis in a suburban municipality. Especially developers. As you hear comments like Fenmore, comments from I and others who are developing this. Under final report on schedule. Visitation to planning. Giving the perspective of the consultant, they're going to bill you for the number of meetings they have to be at. And I think your intention is to have them do a presentation to the planning commission as well. Or just to the supervisors.
It may actually be a joint meeting.
Governor tax under six, so task six. C will report this staff and township planning. And then V is the supervisors. So you you are saying. Under task six, they will. Present to the planning commission. And then after that it'll go, which I'm assuming supervisors probably want some action from us. Or comment, but I didn't take that. Believe you just said it'd be a joint meeting, but. We can make a recommendation with the supervisors who are going to act here.
Under your scoring, I didn't see a score for number four. Experience. It's a time. Team days, not thirty days. I know that's been timeline, but.
I was thinking.
Yeah. Just knowing about a detail that the consultant's going to have to. They want to do some research in the township for the suggestion.
Randy, you got one too. I can save things.
This is a study taking into account traffic issues or other supports that are in place. It's just strictly what's the need.
This this will be a strictly where are the where's the need, where are gaps, what do we have, what's the stock? Uh, and and go from there into the comprehensive plan, which will then take into account. The other.
So four.
Yeah, the last one was done by El Hop. Couple of years now.
So you've kind of answered my. This. Is us, the housing study. These things get done and get put on the shelf. So. Yeah. Appropriate with this, but it'd probably be part of the top plan. Update where then what changes do we need to make in the comp plan? To account for the recommendations from this study. You know, how do we use, that's what the intent is doing this as the. One of the first steps.
With top line, you'll need to take a look at a number of things, right? So you'll need to take a look at this housing study, at the Bridgeport plan, Lincoln Highway streetscape plan, the CB parking wreck plants. You'll need to take all of those into account as you move forward with the conference plan update. And we need to determine whether or not that'll be a regional update, an individual update, and if it's a regional, with what region.
I noticed you mentioned the. Growing together is a. A document to be used, but quite frankly, it's a.
Well, we actually have you growing together in some instances, so, um. It has its pros and cons. We've also used the Conestoga Valley Comprehensive Plan, although that is aging. But if that's aging, so are all we.
Yeah, as you said, it could be used, we've been involved, those in the past. The individual for the township and the enter. Like their, I am seen like external municipal and and the school district as another. Study area with three townships that are in the school district. So. Yes. The broader planning is more efficient. If we can get a consistency in our language across. Capitalities. That, that's the best. And it's also helpful in having to meet all of the. Needs throughout the. Area, like. You know, we don't have to have a mine here in the township. You know, you have to accommodate every need that there is in. A broad sense, but we may not have to. If we do some joint planning and it's located somewhere else. You know, if we can work in a larger area for the housing needs, that would be. Very good.
Will this help us redistrict too at all? Like, or does that go towards that? Or how does redistricting happen as far as like other schools? Like what plans do they take into consideration? Or, I mean, would they look at something like this when we, when we go to redistrict?
I'm sure they would look, they would look at it, sure. Sure. That's, that's totally the school district's purview to decide where their attendance boundaries are.
The township has nothing to do with it because they'll look at all three municipalities for the school district.
Right, but I just was curious, like, would they pull stuff like this just for them to to help redistrict?
Sure, it would be helpful.
I'm sure it would, but I think they use the census that they do on a fairly regular basis to. And they utilize that information for that purpose.
I mean, I think our involvement is we make the information available if they want to use it. They can as appropriate. It's, yes, it is public information and it's there for their. How they use it is. Their determination. Need us nothing from us, wait. New comments. Considerations.
Hopefully, I'll return this in the Delaware one as well. One, because we often get consultants from those areas given to me. If you have other suggestions, I'm absolutely open to them.
I have sometimes, I don't like newspapers, I didn't want that to be the only one.
Consultant is higher, there are various committees that'll be working with the consultant through township staff.
In her point of contact, but there will be a stakeholder group.
Will that include anybody from the planning commission?
The intent is that it will, so we'll ask for a volunteer at some point in the future.
That's. Where I was going, that. Consider, you know, that has been important for us to be involved in the process as it evolves through the various steps here of. Completing the, completing the study. That are involved, I think the input would be important. During that process and not at the end. If we can add some. From the side. All of the new business, the. An item in the briefing.
Yes, a little add-on plan for most properties, three thirty eight.
And and Karen. How we can improve, I guess, maybe in general terms of making us as efficient as we can in our operation. We've had the pleasure of having expert staff at the township who's working very closely with our applicants and and our township engineer to really clean up the plans. And. Till they get to our desk. Made it very easy on us and reviewing it. In general, we have a lot of audience, you know, the need to go through. I think we expedited the plan we had tonight a little bit more than some in the past. Which is why asking in the beginning if there is body was here interested in that. If there was somebody interested, we could have spent a little more time for the audience's benefit. But if not, we can move through something very quickly and not have to read the whole letter. Discuss it, repeat it in the motion. If there's any adjustments to the letter. Any thoughts that you may have? You know, from this side of the table, how you. May see ways to improve, I would welcome them. We have some new blood on here from the past year and. Change is good.
Township staff would welcome your thoughts as well, you know, look, you're volunteering for this position. So we appreciate that and we want to make your time the most useful it can be. So if we've offered, if if writing a draft motion is something that the the planning commission wants to consider. You know, so that you have something to follow that makes it a little easier for for everyone to become involved in the motion making. That's something that, you know, we can.
I think it would be helpful, I mean, I, I'm only on here for two years or three years, so it does take some time to feel comfortable making a motion. Do you do that for the? For the. Big guys.
We do not, but, you know, the majority of them have been on the.
While.
A little while or serving yet another term. Maybe with a gap in between on the planning commission for some of them, so, you know, they they've had their their chance at. Making motions, you know, when it's something new to you, it's not always easy, especially when there's waivers, modifications, deferrals, you know. And sometimes spitting that all in is cumbersome. So, you know, if there's, if it's just a layout generally, and then, you know, you have to fill in obviously what's before you, but.
For for me, when it's, when it's a project like tonight. Just fairly simple, straightforward, a lot of add-on. But a project like, let's just say, the highest project, the residential project, where there's a little bit more nuance to it, there's things that might change as a result of our conversation. So knowing how to put that change into a motion, I think, is what becomes somewhat challenging for volunteers who have not done that a lot. So I think it's, if there's a basic outline of a motion, I think that's helpful. Just to that, I'd like to see other names. Project motions, I don't mind making them, they still have the second, but I think it would be nice for everyone to feel comfortable doing that.
And I had one at one point, I couldn't find it, but it it's a basic outline of what to include in a motion, but you will have to add the specifics.
I don't think some of our needs need to be as long as they are. So if we had some kind of. We've shortened a lot of now to just reference David Miller Associates' letter as opposed to going through each waiver modification. That's been requested, so that's helpful, but, you know, you have the county planning department's comments sometimes need to be introduced to that. And so just a structure that. You know, even if it's simple to say that David Miller Associates' letter dated the plan number, those kinds of things. I think would be helpful. I I do think it would be helpful from the staff, I don't want to add work to your, to staff, but I do think a cover memo for projects that are more detailed oriented like that high project that kind of summarizes the conversations you've had. Because it may prevent us from asking a duplicative question in in a meeting. So if if you've had conversations where you've made changes, just like you're going to do eventually with Rockville. I think it would be helpful for us to to have just a summary of that conversation as part of the packet. So we can see what some of the background and conversations have been.
Well, I know we've done it in the past, but like the plan tonight. Was in two townships with Upper Lakoc. We've provided comments to the other municipality, if they had the majority of the land. I wouldn't want to take action that was contrary to, you know, if they perchance said, no, you can't do this. It'd be nice to know that, yes, they're okay with it. And I think it should come from our side of the table and not from. The consultant saying, not, you know, I believe them, but I, you know, trust but verify. It's kind of my side that we would have something to verify that Upper Lakoc and the case of plan tonight was in in agreement with what's within their township. And did defer to us on the rest, yeah.
So that, that's. Great in a. World where all the timing lines up. But that doesn't always happen.
Well, I mean, to know that if it has happened or if it's in the process. Or even that they actually did contact them. You know, just this is the status of, I think, the policy on Randy's things, you know, what has that done prior to hitting our table. This evening, so. The other, there were reference to many documents, there were some additional documents attached to the email that we got for this meeting. But then that link disappears. So I think it would be helpful if you could send out an email to all of us that has the actual link to the various documents that we talked about, you know, the the plans that are going to be important as we move forward. That. In our free time, we can peruse those. That'll be, you know, the. Going blank now.
What about the comp plans?
Well, well, there's the places twenty forty. Which some are talking about, we have the Bridgeport Plan, we have the Lancaster Transit Transportation Plan. Some of those that. We will build on in the comp plan. And some of those were referenced in regards to the official map in the housing study. You had other documents linked. On on that link. And you mentioned a couple of them, but some of those things that actually impact what the planning commission does from a.
From an IT perspective, IT security perspective, those links can't stay open for more than seven days. It's a hard policy.
Yeah. And I've gone like. I'll send it out and I. Tuesday, but look at it again, because I don't print all those things out and then it's gone. And then I call Tuesday morning and say.
Did let them know the policy is within six days, they have to download it, so. It's giving us either in an email or on a piece of paper links to. Whether it's the county's website that has those documents, the township's website that has those documents.
Majority of those documents are already public information on websites, so.
So, yeah, and I've. Some are hard to find, I'm going to look for some and they're not. Unless you know exactly where to look, they don't pop up. They're not on the first page of the township site, so sometimes you have to click, click, click to get to them. And yes, the download, but the challenge I've had is I don't have a printer that does eleven by seventeen, I can't do the maps. And sometimes, like the plan tonight, we had half of it, but I didn't see the overall plan to know where is Upper Lakoc in the link? That was in the, in the information you sent out, but I can't download it because I can't print it unless I print it eight and a half about eleven and I can't see.
You can, you can view that plan though, right, in PDF format?
I can view it.
You just can't print it.
I can't down, right, I can't print it.
Unfortunately, that plan had about a few pages to it, being that it was.
It's nice to get what you send, you send those extra pages, which I look at some of them, I don't look at all the detail sheets and, you know, the sometimes four, five, eight pages of details, that's not important, but sometimes there are references to notes on the first page and things like that that aren't right and. I'll look at some of them, but anyway, but I can't print those. Because I only do eight and a half by eleven at home.
So is a paper copy packet available for your pickup?
Well, he does, but.
I usually print just the layout, it's too much to print all, it's. It'd be an enormous expense, so.
Well, no, I.
Digital format, I think, is the best, but I will make accommodations.
I'll skim this off when it comes, but then kind of the day of, I. Do the down and dirty review of everything and then I can't see it because it's gone on Tuesday. Think about it. For. Growing green and conservation by design, just some information that. It's a short conversation. The quick read and. Gives you another perspective on. How to develop in a conservation mind.
Thank you.
One more question, will you be using a consultant for the.
Well, regarding to that part, yeah, it hasn't been budgeted for the twenty twenty four, so I can't answer that yet.
Anything else? Thank you. So adjourned.